So we just lost it. Lost it. Can't hide the spit. I think it's sure, you know, sure. I'll reach out and see. I have a laptop.
Yeah.
He included.
Uh.
They're really good.
Hi, how are you? Hi, Wilson. Hi, I have a question. Yeah. I've read a lot of stuff.
There were many.
Okay, so both of those are basically.
You know, I just. I guess.
People on your list. Just because. There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Think this is the twenty twenty one ball collection. And when you go to like conferences and stuff, you'll recognize game recognizes game.
Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody out to tonight's Roy City Council meeting. This is through December third, twenty twenty four. Time is now five thirty. I want to recognize and welcome that we have Councilmember Scadden, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Paul, Councilmember Wilson, and Councilmember Saxton. All of us with us tonight, and thank you for joining us. We've asked Councilmember Paul if she would go ahead and lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. Sophie?
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sophie. Council, we do have one consent items specifically dealing with October financials. Any comments or questions relative to those before I call for a motion to approve?
No.
Okay, I've asked if Amber can help me at least on just one portion of that. It's on the second page of the financials dealing with expenditures. She's going to help clarify a couple of these numbers. Thank you, Amber.
Yeah, so the question came. If you'll remind me, so the expenditures were higher on two of the funds, including one was the risk management fund. The reason for that one being higher than the revenues is because we pay all of our liability insurance in July for the entire year, and that's pretty much eighty percent of the expenditures in that fund. So all of that gets paid in July for the entire year. So the expenditures will be higher now than they are for the rest of the funds. The other one was in the capital projects fund. That one looks higher than, I think it's a sixty percent, I believe, and we're only about a quarter way through the year. The reason for that is the police department also bought most of their vehicles early in the year. And then we've also purchased, we have been doing down payments on the Aquatic Center liner project, and so that looks higher than it should normally look, but that's why that one's higher, too.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions relative to the consent items? Okay, hearing none then. Do I have a motion then to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ann. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Diane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No opposed? Thank you. All in favor? We do now have public comment period. If you have something you'd like to share with tonight, please step up to the mic. Just give us your name and address and make any comment you like, Kevin.
My name is Kevin Homer. I live at fifty three ninety eight South, four thousand West here in Roy. I have a question that has to do with the budget, and it's mostly with public works and how funds are provided for roads. I know that this body doesn't have a whole lot of ability to increase the funds. Most of it comes from the federal level or the state level to be able to fund the work that we do on roads. But I do have one question. Normally, I don't even like asking a question if I don't have at least one or two or three different proposals for how to fix the problem. This one, I don't actually know how to fix it, but I'm asking for feedback. It can be now, it can be later, specifically about how the funds come for roads here in the city. I know that a lot of them come from fuel taxes. Some of them come from registration of vehicles, initial sale and licensing of vehicles. So there's four or five different ways that the roads are funded. But my question, I know we can't really solve the problem here, but maybe we can lobby at the state level for how to fix this. I'm a proponent of alternative fuels for solar, for our vehicles, including electric vehicles. My concern is electric vehicles don't pay any of the fuel taxes. And I don't know how there is any quality reach from internal combustion engines versus electric vehicles, and how do the EVs contribute to the building and maintenance of the roads? So my question is, is there any discussion at this level to lobby at the state level for adjusting that kind of what I see as an inequity? So.
Okay. Matt, I'm going to put you on the spot. I know that's kind of a general question, but maybe you can help answer the question is, is it where do we get the funding for roads?
Yeah, so you are correct. B and C Road Fund.
Specifically for EVs. Everybody, all the other vehicles, I can see where it comes from, but it seems like the EVs create a hole in the funding that.
And locally, we haven't been discussing that, but I know of conversations through the state that they have been addressing that with higher fees when they register.
Okay.
But I don't.
A little bit higher when you register is fine, but use of the roads over years and years, it seems like EVs, I don't know what the answer is, which is kind of why I hesitate to bring this up. But I would encourage this body, let's be active in those discussions with the state. Because more and more, you know, I just drive around the roads here in the county and in this area. I'm seeing a lot of EVs around, driving on the roads, that they're not contributing very much to maintain. So I would encourage that discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Anybody else like to share a thought? Okay, hearing none, we'll go out of public comment period, and we'll jump right into the presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The one deals with the fiscal year twenty tour for audit report. Ryan, I believe you're going to jump up and share your thoughts in terms of your audit. And by the way, we have a copy for the city council members on the audit report if you'd like one. Thanks, Ryan.
Sure. Hello, Mayor and Council. Do each of you have a bound report there? Perfect. So my name's Ryan Child. I'm from Child Richard CPAs and Advisors. We are the independent CPA firm that's come in and conducted an audit over the annual financial statements of Roy City for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And I'd like to go over that financial report and share some of the highlights with you. If you'll open up the report first to page eleven, we'll start with a good positive item here. This is a certificate of achievement in financial reporting that was issued to Roy City based on their prior year financial report. And so it's, it's an excellent achievement, and it is based on this report, which goes above and beyond the general requirements. It includes an introductory section in the front, the letter of transmittal, the statistical section, which provide a lot of additional analysis and understanding behind Roy City's finances. If you'll turn to page thirteen with me, this is really the purpose of having an audit report. It's to have an independent party express an opinion on these financial statements, whether they are supported with third-party verification and underlying documentation and so forth, and if they follow generally accepted accounting principles. We have expressed an unmodified opinion, a clean, a good opinion on these financial statements. This report also describes management's responsibilities over the preparation of these financial statements, both from the data entry level all the way up until the financial statements are prepared. It describes our responsibilities as auditors as well. And I would like to turn, ask you to turn over to page nineteen. This section that follows the independent auditor's report is management's discussion and analysis, providing a broad overview of the finances of the city with a two-year comparative. This section also provides a lot of good detail, and if you read through nothing else but this section, this would provide a lot of good information for you to have information about the details for the year of Roy City, especially if you take a look at page twenty through twenty, probably through twenty-five or so. It provides a lot of detailed narrative about why, what changed in twenty twenty four compared to twenty twenty three. Of course, we're talking about the fiscal year twenty twenty four ending on June thirtieth. To get right into the financial statements, if you'll turn over to page thirty-three with me, page thirty-three is the balance sheet of the governmental funds. And this accounting is very similar to the financial statements that were, you looked at this evening earlier, just before me from Cassell. So these statements report the balance sheets, so the assets and the liabilities, first in the general fund, the RDA, capital improvement fund, and then an aggregate of the other non-major funds. You can see at the top of the page is unrestricted cash in each of those funds, followed by restricted cash. The unrestricted cash in the general fund, you had two point seven million, which as of June thirtieth was available for the city's use for ongoing operations and items that have been set out in the budget for the year. The RDA fund had two point six million. The capital projects fund, just under six point one million. And the other governmental funds had a hundred and sixty nine thousand in unrestricted money and five hundred and thirty-three thousand that is restricted on its usage according to the impact fee analysis that's been conducted. In the general fund, you can see there's just over six million dollars in restricted money, which is restricted for road usage. It's money that's been collected but not yet spent from the Class C roads and the transportation sales tax that were just being discussed earlier. You can see total assets with the double underline, the first subtotal on this page, which includes receivables and due from other government amounts. But I'd like to maybe not get caught up in that, that total too much as there are a number of offsets with liabilities and deferred inflows of resources. And rather skip down to the bottom part of the page with the fund balances. The fund balances are the net difference really between the assets and liabilities that the city held in each of these respective funds. In the general fund, you can see a fund balance for, that is considered non-spendable, which means the money has already been spent for inventory or prepaid, but that, that asset, that inventory hasn't really been used. The roads haven't been salted yet with that inventory. You can see the amount that's restricted for roads and public transit in the general fund at six million, three thousand dollars. And then the amount that is unassigned and available for use based on the city's discretion, what, what you've established through your budget, at just under four point eight million. This four point eight million number is equal to eighteen percent of the city's revenues, and this state's requirement is that it be between five percent and thirty-five percent of revenue. So you're right there in the middle. Total fund balance is in the general fund at ten million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, which is a decrease of about five hundred thousand compared to the prior year, which I, I understand is exactly about what was planned for. In the RDA fund, you can see the fund balance at two point six million. And then in the capital projects fund, you can see a non-spendable portion of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a deposit that was made on a, a vehicle just before the end of the year. And then you can see some money that has been assigned, so not restricted by an outside party, but assigned by, by the city, for public safety of three hundred and twelve thousand, recreation of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, and then other capital projects at five point one million. If you'll turn with me, unless anybody has any questions on this page, I'd be happy to go over. If you'll turn with me to page thirty-five, we can look at the revenues and expenses in each of these funds. The top line in the general fund being taxes. So you can see taxes collected or otherwise entitled to the city were fifteen million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So in the general fund, taxes represent more than half of the total revenue in the general fund, which was twenty-six million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Of those taxes, about half of it is sales tax. A third is property tax, and about a fifth is from franchise tax. You can then see licenses and permits at three hundred and ninety-two thousand. Another major source of revenue was the intergovernmental revenue. The city received a, a large ramp grant to help out with the recreational facilities. I believe it was close to nine hundred thousand. You're able to recognize some of the ARPA funding that you have received and used, and a few fire grants that were also received and able to be, be used. Intergovernmental revenue also includes the Class C road money, as well as the transportation sales tax. While the charges for services, another major source of revenue, at three million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, are from charges from services for public safety, ambulatory fees and so forth, which represent about two point nine million. Other charges are from parks and recreation and fines and forfeitures. The other funds have revenues from intergovernmental sources, specifically the RDA, as well as interest income in each of those funds. Total revenues for all governmental funds was twenty-seven million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, while total expenditures in these governmental funds was twenty-eight million, seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So expenditures were about one million dollars more than the revenues were for the year. Of course, these expenditures are not all ongoing items that, that occur. Those ongoing items are in the first section of expenditures called current operating, which are then split out by department or, or function, such as general government, public safety, public works, and parks and recreation. The city did expend quite a bit of money on capital outlay. So we've talked about where the money has come in. Now you can see where, where the city is putting it back and reinvesting into the, the city with those operational expenses that you can see, as well as the capital outlay. In the general fund, there was six hundred and eighty-six thousand spent on new radios and an exhaust system for public safety. One point three million spent on public work improvements, and two point six million spent on the pickleball courts and the complex improvements in the general fund. The, the capital improvement fund, you, you can see about seventy-seven thousand dollars being spent in capital outlay on the public works, building improvements, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, and a hundred and twenty-one thousand being spent on vehicles and equipment for public safety and public works. And then fifty-four thousand being spent on mower and mower improvements for parks and recreation. And then in the other governmental funds. And then in the other governmental funds, specifically the parks development fund, you can see two hundred and twenty-five thousand being spent on pickleball, pickleball court improvements and the dog park as well. In total, if you go down to the third row from the bottom. Maybe I won't go quite that far just yet. Let's go to the fifth row from the bottom. In the general fund, you can see that five hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty was transferred from the general fund to the capital improvements fund. And after that transfer, there was a five hundred and four thousand dollar decrease in fund balance in the general fund. A hundred and sixteen thousand increase in the RDA fund. Twelve thousand dollar decrease in capital improvements and a hundred and fifty-six thousand decrease in those other governmental funds. If you'll now turn with me and on to page forty. Page forty is the statement of net position, similar to a balance sheet, but on on this statement of net position for the water, storm sewer, solid waste and the internal service fund. They also report capital asset and infrastructure, the pipes that are in the ground and so forth, some of those long-term assets. So if you look at the top of the page, you can see cash being the first item. And then receivables, inventory and prepaid expenses. So these are assets that are in cash or could be converted to cash or utilized within a year through operations. You can see three point eight million in the water fund. And then going across, there's two point two in storm sewer. Five million in solid waste and one point nine in the internal service fund. It's good to compare these subtotals of current assets to the current liabilities. Which are on page forty-one, just the following page. The current liabilities are are obligations that the city has that will pull from the city's current assets or cash within one year. You can see the total current liabilities in the water fund is one million, three hundred and forty-three thousand. Which includes eight hundred and six thousand of accounts payable. And the other major item there is the current portion of the revenue bonds at four hundred and seventy-six thousand. And then, of course, the non-current portion of the revenue bonds is about four lines lower at a million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand. And each year, the total debt obligation is about four hundred, about four hundred and seventy-six thousand each year. Pretty close to that. So there's there's about four years left as of June thirtieth on these revenue bonds. The other funds have relatively low liabilities, or at least current liabilities in the storm sewer and the solid waste and the internal service fund. But that's a good comparison to make between the current assets and current liabilities. Another good line to watch is on page forty-two. This, this page separates the operating revenues of these funds with the operating expenses that are ongoing expenses that the city will continue to incur. The difference between those numbers is represented as operating income or loss. You can see the water and sewer utility fund at an eight hundred and eight thousand dollar positive net income. However, it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars lower than it was in fiscal year twenty-three. The storm sewer at a positive one eighty-seven, which is about two hundred thousand dollars better than it was in twenty twenty-three. Solid waste at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, about the same as the prior year. And then the internal service fund at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which is a little bit lower than it was in twenty twenty-three. So altogether, those those numbers look good, but the utility fund did have a a decrease and in their operating income with an increase in expenses. The next little section there is non-operating revenues and expenses with interest revenue, gain or loss on sale of assets and interest expense. The fourth row from the bottom, you can see capital grants and contributions at four point four million. This is the ARPA money that I think you received a year, maybe two years prior, but you've been able to spend that money and now recognize it as revenue. That money was spent on the capital project. Which the the acquisition and construction of capital assets that was expended last year was about six point point four million. So on page forty-three, I'll show you those cash flows. The first subtotal on the top of the page, you can see cash provided by operating activities. And there are positive numbers going across all of those funds with a million dollars being to the positive for the utility fund. And then you can see where that money was spent. The acquisition and construction of capital assets at six point four million. So money came in on the sale of some capital assets of a hundred and seventy thousand. You were able to recognize those ARPA, the ARPA money of four point four million. And then the principal payment of bonds at four hundred and sixty-six thousand last year. And some interest being paid. And so after those capital and financing activities, if you look at the third row from the bottom, you can see the net increase or decrease in cash. The water fund having a decrease in cash of one point one million. While the storm sewer and solid waste had increases of four hundred and twenty-three thousand and four hundred and twenty-eight thousand respectively. With the motor pool fund or the internal service fund, farthest to the right, showing a increase of eighty-nine thousand compared to the prior year and having a cash balance of one point eight million. The next section are the notes to the financial statements. So some of those balances and transactions that I just went through. There's a lot more detail and explanation on on how the city accounts for those items through these notes. A number of tables as well that can help explain some of those items. We did also conduct test work with respect to compliance over state code that's determined by the state auditor's office. And we've done our work on internal controls over financial reporting on these financial statements. As well as internal controls over compliance-related matters. And we don't have any findings to issue or bring to your attention this evening. Altogether, it it was really a great audit. Amber and 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 everybody in management does a great job. So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, council, do you have any comments or question for Ryan relative to the audit?
I just want to say I'm just proud of everybody who handles the money for our city. They they do a great job also. So it's good to hear from you.
And thank you for reviewing it that way and and the pages and per detail and stuff.
And it was just as exciting the second time as it was the first time for for this guy. So me and Brian, we were just like in in wrapped attention. It was fantastic. Thank you.
I can watch some football games two or three times.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Ryan, thank you. Go ahead. Sophie had a comment?
No.
Go ahead. Please, send the mic.
On the, on the breakdown of the property and sales tax. Is that a normal breakdown? Meaning, I think you said we were at
About one-half sales tax? Yeah, I I think it is. Property tax rates differ from city to city. So that that could certainly change. And it also depends on how far built out a city may be. Somebody that's just, that's out in the rural community probably would rely on sales tax a little more. Than they would on property tax. Or where you guys are at build out or very close to it. You have more property tax that's contributing to it probably than other cities do.
Okay, I just.
And the detail, if you'd like to see, there is more detail on page thirty-seven that'll show you the amount of revenue that comes in. On those taxes in a little little bit more detail that'll provide the numbers besides just the fractions or percentages that I shared with you. Page thirty-seven, the third column from the left, those like property taxes were four point four million. Sales and use tax at eight point one million. So you can see where that money is coming from.
Okay, hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ryan. Any other comments? Brian, thank you for performing the audit. We appreciate you and your team doing that for us. And Amber, again, thank you, okay? Great success when you have an audit this thorough. And your team did an incredible job, okay, to make to make this work. You make Roy look really good. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It certainly will keep us out of the newspaper. And but more importantly is is that the residents of Roy City will know that you're managing, okay, this this city and this corporation, okay, very effectively. So thank you for your service on that. Okay. Council, we have one more presentation. We've asked Blakely if he'll come up and give us a rundown on waste management recycling presentation. Thanks for joining us tonight.
The pleasure is all mine. Blakely and I with waste management. I don't know how you follow an audit. So, you know, I'll do my best to try to capture everybody's attention. Of course, my computer works right on. So I'm gonna talk through as I kind of boot this up and I'll go through the numbers. So there's been tonight, what I'm gonna go over is diversion reports, what it looks like, current state. Based upon our last report, how that affects the communities. And then overall, you know, what impact that has back to the city. The one question that I know has been asked by residents as well as council members is where is the stream currently going? Where is your recycling going? You know, all of your material used to go to the old recycled earth plant. We all know that. And then a portion of that was transferred to us and we had a swap-out process. When they had, you know, their issues there at their facility. We then began taking it to Wasatch Integrated and that's where it currently goes now. We are looking at outlets right now to get the material back to, you know, the county and have it transferred down to waste management. So I'll stop right there because I know there was questions on that as I boot this up. And we look at some, you know, more integral numbers. But does anybody have questions as far as how the stream is, where it goes, how it's processed, all of those questions?
I guess my question, Blakely, would be as I said, where physically is this particular, you call Wasatch Integrated?
Yeah, so many of you are familiar. So it's in Leighton, off Hillfield Road. It's, you know, the old, I guess a lot of people know it as the old burn plant. It's the MRF that they built there. It's a very good MRF. It has strong capabilities. It used to be a dirty MRF and a lot of people think that comes with a negative connotation. It doesn't. All a dirty MRF is, it means all material goes there and is processed. A clean MRF just takes the recyclable material. So that's the distinction between the two. They are going more towards a clean MRF with that material. So but ultimately, our end goal is to get back to having the material, you know, stay here and transfer it down to our facility. Our facility is one of the most state-of-the-art in the country. Therefore, that is important to us to eventually have that back down to us. We want that material. And right now, we've seen some good and bad in the recycling industry. It's very cyclical. Right now, you know, it tends to be pretty solid. We see that a lot of times around the holidays. And there's a little bit of dip after the first of the holidays, but it does continue to stay very strong.
And when you're saying strong, does that mean participation, people, you know, donating recyclables? What does that mean when you say strong?
No, when I say it continues to be strong, from our standpoint, and I'll show you what the the numbers look like. And of course, you know, technology always works spot on. It, what, when I say it continues to be strong, we look at recycling as what the commodity value is, you know, how that's going. We're not paying to have that material processed, that there's outlets for it. We're able to turn that material and continue to see outlets for it. So and it does continue to be, you know, fairly strong.
So if you're gonna talk about, and this may be part of the presentation. The cost, you know, a little while ago, they were talking about a lot of cities not doing recycling because there, maybe that was it. There weren't outlets for it. You know, the cost was was too great and and that stuff. Maybe you can kind of review. Has that, is that one of the cycles that's just now turned around? You know, maybe you can go over that a little bit.
Yeah, no, recycling is always gonna be cyclical. It's very much, I'm gonna need the IT guy to connect me to the internet, so. A USB, I say it connect to the internet so I can pull it up. So, yeah, it's it's always cyclical. I mean, it's up, it's down. I mean, I, you know, you remember probably for those of you that were here, six, seven years ago, it was the China. Kind of leveled off since then. And so, you know, we see it kind of stabilizing a little bit. So that's kind of, does that answer your question?
A little. We'll see how it goes.
And then define, because you you talked about a clean MRF and a dirty MRF. What the heck's a MRF? Is it a smurf? Is it, what is it?
Materials Recovery Facility. What that is, that's where your material goes. It's processed, it's bailed. And it's then, you know, we find an end user or in in this case, Wasatch Integrated has an end user. Roy continues to do a excellent job as it relates to recycling. And as the reports pull up, I'll show you. Your, your participation in trends continue to, you know, outpace. And we see a turn in the trying to do two things at once and not always great. So this will kind of help show what this looks like from the last month we did an audit and the reporting on it. So I'll show you the exact numbers, but this is what the numbers reflect. Through your contribution efforts just for the month of October. Okay, through your recycling efforts from a city perspective, you were able to save nine hundred and eighty-six mature trees. Hundred and forty-one cubic yards of landfill space, hundred and eighty-nine thousand kilowatts of electricity. Avoided a hundred and ninety-six metric tons of GHG emissions and two hundred and forty thousand gallons of water. So how that, where that impact comes is from your diversion. So we look at diversion as a the amount of trash that comes from the city and what portion of that is diverted and does not go to the landfill. So your diversion for the month of October, although it came down as a whole. The city is doing a very, very good job. It ranges anywhere from nine percent to four percent. That your overall diversion of your total MSGW that's trash is being diverted away and going to the landfill. So of the hundred, one thousand four hundred and twenty-three tons. Sixty of that was diverted through recycling through your efforts. You know, the the goal, and we put that goal out there. It's a fifteen percent diversion rate. It's tough to hit, okay? And we'll continue to strive to hit that. We'll see improvements. But without, we'll continue to have recycling education to bring that up. But overall, you know, we do see some strong trends with Roy and their recycle efforts and what they're doing. So with not having a mandatory recycling program per se. These numbers are in line and actually above what we see for similar cities of your size and through the participation.
I have a question. When you say diversion, are you, is that like contamination? Or how, what is the diversion?
Yeah, so if you think about it, you get every material that comes in through the city. So whether it be trash, recycling, everything that comes through. That's the portion that is diverted away from the landfill and does not actually get, go into that's the portion that is diverted away from the landfill and does not actually get, go into the landfill. It's diverted and repurposed or recycled.
Is all of the recycling completely from the recycling bins? Or do you have any recycling that comes from the traditional trash bins?
Uh, it, it's very minimal through trash bins because it's not really being processed as Wasatch Integrated has moved away from a dirty MRF, kind of towards a clean MRF because that material doesn't go through the MRF Materials Recovery Facility. For example, through our site in Salt Lake City, we are a straight clean MRF, so we do not process trash. We only process recycled containers.
And what is the percentage of success that you have? Because I hear reports continually that people aren't putting proper things in their recycling bin. And so, what kind of complications and problems do you have with that? And then overall, as well as then specifically Roy?
Yeah, so, great question. I can tell you, yes, we constantly are going to be challenged as it relates to what goes into the recycle container. And we call it a lot of wish cycling, okay? So, I just looked at an audit done, that was performed on Roy's material and I can tell you some of the major contaminants that are sent through Roy. It's your plastic bags. It's actually wood. They see a lot of wood because, yes, wood is recyclable. It's not recyclable through your recycle system, so through that element. So, those are some of the major components that, you know, we do see as far as contamination. One thing that we could, and it, it just came on, it's very revolutionary. We have three cities on it right now, but we do have the capability now, when the city is ready. I'm just going to introduce it right now. Matt knows about this. I believe I spoke to the mayor about this. But we have the capability now. It's called Smart Truck. So, you know, if the city is wishing to really make an effort into recycling, our trucks now can actually, when it picks up a container, it can identify the container. It can identify the address and when it's tipped, it can identify if it's contaminated or not. And it can then automatically spit out a notification that it was contaminated at the site when we pick up the, each individual trash can. That is available. I can do a full presentation on that at a later time, but it is, it's revolutionary. So.
And that costs more?
It does not cost more.
Oh.
So, I have a question. So, I worked at a high school and we used to recycle all the time. We had bins all over the school that all the teachers put all their papers and stuff in and they don't do anymore because they said it got to be way too expensive. So, it just goes all in the regular dumpster. It just drives me crazy. And so, is that because you guys started charging them too more? The district is just costing too much or, I don't know?
I need to talk to that district because that should not be the case and.
Yeah, we don't recycle anything anymore.
If we are servicing, I would need to look to see if we service that account, but that should not be the case. That, that, that surprises me.
Yeah, we recycle district, get a hold of them because.
I, I will.
Yeah, because we used to always have cans all throughout and all the papers and, so now, we have a recycle bin in our copy center, but they just go put it in their regular dumpsters, not recyclable.
And it might be a good idea. I think you alluded to the comment that would be is, we've got a number of solid waste handlers in Roy. Certainly Waste Management is one of the big ones, but there are other ones who basically have containers that they're using. So, maybe the harder, easier question would be is, is Waste Management then providing resources and service to the Weber County School District's schools within, within Roy? And that would answer, I think, Ann's question whether or not, in fact, there might be just a disconnect happening here.
I believe there is because that, I mean, truly, you caught me off guard on that one.
Because I specifically asked our janitor, how come you don't have that in? Because I do the mail and I put it all in the recycle bin, the discarded magazines and catalogs, hundreds a week. And he said, yeah, it got too expensive, so we just don't do it anymore.
Yeah, and, and to the mayor's point, that there is a possibility that we're not, we don't have that contract. I specifically am the city official, so overseeing government affairs. So, I will look into that because if we do have that, it, it's just like at the city and I use this as an example. You ha, you may have a public works person that goes, gosh, you know what? We're, it's easier to put a trash can here versus, you know, put a recycle and the effort and it's all laid out. It may have been something similar. That wouldn't be something that we would designate. We would not say, hey, Weber County, you have to do this. That would be designed from the school or the county on what they want to do. But, you know, now, in most cases, it's still, there is a cost benefit, but also an environmental benefit as well to recycling over MSW or his trash.
Right, I mean, I think of all the trees we could have saved all these years.
Quick question, what percentage of Roy households are actually taking a recycling can? Do you know that off the top of your head or do we know that?
54% now, close. I, you know what's close to that? 54-ish percent?
And then what you're saying is you're getting a, let's just round it up, 10% diversion? So, of the 54% of households, only 10% of what I'm taking and tossing in my recycling bin is going to integrated?
No, 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 no. Sorry, and I, gosh, I'm trying to simplify this better. No, the diversion is of all the recycling that's, so, when you take it, your total number of recycling, trash, everything, okay? The portion that is diverted from going to the landfill is that roughly between nine and, you know, it felt.
So, the entirety of the, the waste collection?
Correct.
So, so what, I guess what I'm going back to is what percentage of what I'm taking and as a philanthropic effort, I'm trying to do my part for, for the environment. What percentage of my stuff that I'm taking and throwing into the recycle is making it to integrated waste?
Yeah, so, I mean, everything.
Everything, okay.
Everything that goes into your recycling, I can rest assured. It, it arrives and it is processed. Yes, there is contamination that can occur, maybe an item that you think that's placed in there. But rest assured, whatever is in your recycling container does end up being processed and goes to the recycle center.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's really important because, yeah, because what we're already seeing and what the residents are hearing and this really residents talking to people outside of Roy is that other cities have basically abandoned somewhat the recycling program. And, and to be honest with you, Blakely, we've been saying to our residents, that's not the case with Waste Management. You are taking those recycled materials they put in there and you are processing. Now, there could be, as to your point, people just because it's convenient, putting them all in a plastic bag and then dumping the bag in there. And that creates some handling and processing problems for you because now that plastic bag is a contaminant. So, the argument would be is, we probably could do better to teach and, and educate our residents to simply leave all that stuff alone. If it's an empty box, put an empty box. Don't try to put it in a bag and create the problem. We could probably do better. But what I think I heard you say is, of all of the solid waste material coming out of, okay, all of our sources, and there's lots of sources, 10% of that is being directed into a recycling plant. So, only 90% is going to the landfill. And that's really the great message because it says that, that there's really activity going on for those who are concerned about environmental issues and certainly support, like I do, recycling, that it's working and it's working in Roy.
Absolutely, and I, you said that perfectly and I, I want to mention a couple of things. You know, it's been, you know, quite some time since I have been before this council and shame on me because I should be working with each one of you on different initiatives that, you know, we as Waste Management can help the city through, you know, different philanthropic efforts. You know, we do a great job through the, you know, Easter egg hunt, but there are different outlets that we can help with through education, driving up that participation, doing all those things. Roy is doing a very good job. Yes, it can be better through some education and different things. The one thing that you said that is the most difficult part as I stand before the council is this, okay? You are going to hear, you know what, it goes to the landfill. It doesn't get processed. I, my friend knows somebody that's a friend and, you know what, it's all a sham, recycling. You guys, I think many of you have seen our facility. Go see Wasatch Integrated. I can tell you, that is so far from the truth. It's probably more important than ever because as our landfill spaces fill up, and we can say this with 100% certainty, Waste Management is the largest recycler in North America. We're also the largest landfiller. So, we know the impact and how quickly a landfill can fill up. And so, our impact and what we can do to drive participation into recycling, the better off we are. So, you know, want to definitely say that, but I truly, reach out to me, all of you. And, you know, if there's different projects that you may have or a school, perfect examples of school district. I now have some homework to go, hey, if we're servicing Weber County, we need to talk to a few people because it sounds like, you know, there's been a little bit of a downturn as far as recycling goes, so.
So, basically, it's cardboard, paper, like pop cans, milk cartons, plastic milk cartons, glass?
Certain avenues for glass, we do have capability, not in the bin, not in your recycle bin, but there are outlets for glass recycling, so.
Okay, so basically, plastics and papers products?
Aluminums.
Aluminums, like aluminum cans, cardboard, yeah. So, Amazon boxes, that's the big thing this time of year.
Yes.
I love mine right now.
And we have a national contract with Amazon. We're constantly working with them on, you know, packaging, doing better, you know, different recycling efforts, you know. It's a great part about being with an organization like Waste Management. We're on the forefront of it. You know, very rarely do we get caught off guard going, gosh, we never thought about that. We invest hundreds of millions of dollars every year in R&amp;D to try to reinvent or figure out a better way of repurposing material.
Well, maybe in our newsletter, for those who recycle, I mean, for the citizens, maybe just put down, do not recycle these, do not put these in your recycle bin and these are the things that are acceptable. Because maybe people don't know.
And, and I can do you one better. I'll, if you have spot in the newsletter, I'll put it all together for you. Send it on over. If you find room for me, I'll make sure to do all that and provide any of that material.
That, that cool little like one pager that you showed, the website, would be also really cool for us to, if, if that comes out on like a recurring basis?
Comes out on a monthly basis. I sometimes send it to Matt, not always. So, I will do a better job of making sure that he has that. But, you know, we have like some social media posts that come out with this along with, you know, this on a monthly basis. Then you'll get an annual summary. I'll make sure that everybody has that. And then that's something you can provide in your newsletter as well.
When you talk about the cost benefit ratio being positive, so basically the cost effectiveness, could you be a little more specific on the details and what you mean when you say cost effective? Like, cost effective for who?
Yeah, um, great question. Yeah, so, and I, I can't speak for directly Wasatch Integrated, okay? So, I can speak for Waste Management. So, it really depends on the commodity, okay? That's, that's a very, so, when I say it's cost effective, we're not paying to repurpose material. There is a benefit back to when it's repurposed, okay? There is a positive that when we send that to the mill, that we're actually getting money over and above. But it costs to process the material, so there's still a net negative, but there's a positive as it goes out because of the cost to operate a MRF. So, you know, i- in negative times, we would actually pay to have somebody process paper or pay to process cardboard so it doesn't go to the landfill. Those commodities are now positive, so. And that's when I say they're positive, we get money back. Now, we still have to process all the material and there's a cost associated with that, but the commodities have a positive value.
And so, what's that ratio then when you talk about the, so, it costs money to, to produce the product? You get a little bit of money back from that product. Are we taking, saying that it, you know, it's like an 80/20 thing? Or, I mean, like, what kind of ratio are you having for that cost effectiveness?
So, every city, every entity is different. Salt Lake City is an uber recycler, okay? They, okay, oftentimes receive, may receive a rebate, okay? There are other cities that have high contamination rates, that material to process is not as effective. Okay, so their processing may be, you know, they may be paying more for that material. But some cities receive a rebate, some cities, you know, have to pay for that net difference. So, that's why I say when you're saying, what is that? Every city is different. I mean, I could show you city and you'd go, oh, one city's here, I mean, it paid, what's the cost on transportation? What does that look like? So, there's, there's a delta amongst those where it's not as simple as saying, hey, it's, you know, you're getting back $10 a ton. No, one city may be getting $10 a ton back even over and above the processing, but another city might be paying $50 because, $50 a ton because their process, their material's so contaminated and what that costs because anytime there's contamination in your recycle stream, it takes a very expensive ride, okay? What happens is, it goes into your recycle bin, it then goes throughout the entire MRF. It then gets identified, hey, this is trash. It then gets transferred to a trash facility, which is 60 miles away. So, that one piece of item that somebody said, hey, I'm just gonna throw it in my recycle bin, costs a lot of money to get to the end product of going to a landfill versus putting it into a trash bin.
And so, that cost is recognized per city? So, then a city, certain cities that do better have a lower cost? Or is that a pretty uniform cost and then it's just balanced out by rebates?
No, certain cities have a lower cost. I mean, that's what it boils down to. That, I mean, when you look, but every city is structured differently, okay? So, you are not on a blended value rate, okay? So, certain cities go on a blended value rate where you pay, okay? So, you pay hauling rate for your recycle. So, whatever it is for us to pick up that recycle can and dump it, that's what that fee is. There's no element of trash or recycling to it, okay? And then what many cities do, and that's why I build this in, they then pay a blended value. They say, hey, you know what, we're going to actually take you out of the recycle game. We'll pay to have you process the material and whatever money is, comes back or we owe based upon the commodities that you receive, that's what we will either pay or get back. So, they basically take us out, say, you're gonna process whatever we are to pay for recycling. That's what it is. So, does that make sense?
A little bit. And so, when you're talking about the, the trash, the contamination, the penalty basically is then the rate may go up for that city. So, if you have, what's like the advantage of this Smart Truck? Is that to say, oh, you can notify so-and-so that they keep doing the wrong thing? Or, I mean, it costs the same. It sounds like there's probably gonna be a pro and a con, so.
There's, uh, so, the huge pro is, it will bring down your contamination. It will be better, okay? Your costs will go down with Smart Truck. The negative is, when you implement Smart Truck, you deal with many residents and sometimes there can be some negative aspects to notifying residents that, hey, you are putting contaminated material in. Other cities say, hey, if you do it three times, we'll remove a can. Or, hey, if you do it on the third time, you receive a couple-dollar fee. So, it changes the behavior. I promise your contamination goes to uber clean in a quick hurry. But there can be some negative pushback from residents when you implement it.
That's right.
So, this is a dumb question probably, but my daughter told me that if my cardboard is wet, that you can't recycle it. Is that true?
It, it's not 100% true, but it can be so saturated that it can be to the point where it is not processable. I mean, I can tell you, the one thing at our facility, that's where we constantly are trying to turn the bales as we get them. I mean, we'll have 30 bales in a day and we're trying to get them out that same day because the last thing we want is to have to either store them or a rainstorm come. What happens, when you hear a lot of times, somebody, every person up here probably has heard this. I saw a. I saw a truck and it was dumping recyclables at the landfill. Well, what happens is, is, and it's happened to many haulers, we're not the only one, but that material comes, it gets processed, it sits outside, a huge snowstorm hits, we're not able to move it, well, the only place it can go is a landfill. So when somebody sees a big truck full of cardboard that goes to the landfill, they're going, see, that's, it's usually been uh, contaminated in the process, so.
Makes sense.
Any other questions, you're easy on me tonight, come on.
Well, I, to be honest with you, Brittany, if there's a way, there was some really good information, you brought it in your charts. Uh, we'd certainly like to see that, if we can get a hard copy of that, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, and I'll provide that, we, we receive that on a monthly basis, um, the city has it, and then you get an annual thing as well, I, I need to do a better job of getting that over to Matt. This is, this is something that, you know, maybe once a quarter I send over and I should, I receive it every month, so I'll make sure that you receive that on a monthly basis, yeah.
Yeah, and Blakely, I'll be honest with you, the information is really important here. People are just so confused about this, and I, and I feel bad because I think a lot of the, um, a lot of the comments or concerns that we may get on this topic is really driven because of issues taking place in other cities. And they believe, well, if it's happening there, it must be happening here. Uh, I, I will tell you, we've been, we've been very positive in telling your story. What's important is, is you give us some locations, you certainly give us some facts, and I think now the educational opportunity is for us to go ahead and share that information, is the public understand is, is for however you choose to manage this, our efforts to provide a recycling opportunity for our residents in Roy is working. It, it may not work in every area around this broader community, but it's certainly working better here. But I think we can also do a lot to try to educate on how we can make our products that we're sending through reci- recycling better. And if that means we don't conveniently put them in plastic bags, if we're not throwing in wood chunks into the recycling, if there's some things like that you see, then certainly we should be an advocate to help our residents know the things they can do to help us be better at it, and, and I think that's really the important part, and I think it's based on facts. And so you've shared some great information for us tonight.
Thank you so much, and again, we appreciate the partnership with, I mean, we, we were just talking about it, you're one of our lon- longest standing partnerships with any city, and we greatly appreciate that. So however we can help the community, and wherever we can be a resource to you, please let us know, and then I'll make sure that you have all the information available on a monthly basis.
That's perfect.
So we'll be the first city to get the Smart Trucks then, right?
No, we've already, Smart Trucks Live, if you want it, hey, it's, it's a city council decision. If you're ready for a presentation, um, I'm ready to present to you, we'd love for you to go on Smart Truck, um, it's exciting. Um, but, you know, I always like to make sure that you're fully aware of the things that come with it.
That's right.
Yeah. Can you remind us what it costs for uh, one bin for recycling for a customer? Do you remember offhand? Okay.
Somebody help me out.
We can check into it.
Yeah, I, 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 I'd be shooting in the door.
I just thought for the meeting, when people are listening, it might be helpful for them, but.
Yeah.
You know, I have a blue bin, my daughter uses my recycle bins, she don't have to pay.
Hey, I fill them up every time, I just say, thank you, Amazon.
Um, yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, um, you do, for an optional program, Roy City does an incredible job, I mean, this area for, as I say, an optional program, you do great. I mean, Roy is doing a, I'd love to see more participation, okay? I, I'd love to have you on Smart Truck, all of those things, but for what you have right now, you're doing a great job. You know, you should, you should all be commended, but there's room for improvement, we'd love to help you out, so, um.
I have a quick comment on your, when you're talking about what you can do to help us, I think social media and having it a little simpler, and maybe focus on one item, like no wood chips. Maybe the next month, do a social media post where rinse out your containers. You get those big lists of do's and don'ts, and I think people just go swipe.
We have a communications team, I don't know how active this council is on social media, okay? Because I'll tell you.
You have a perfect social media, she will share anything you get.
We have a very large resource in our communications team. We'll make it as robust and literally send the file over to you and go, here you go. I mean, we, you have that available in a resource, so, you know, we, you know, always look for a little bit of guidance, when we say, hey, let's focus on plastic bags this month, and let's go cardboard next month, and we can make it super simple. Um, you know, hey, next Earth Day, let's do a, you know, tour at the, you know, MRF and different things, and go from there. And don't be afraid as you have residents that may challenge you on things. Most, if not all, have my email, send it over to me, ask those questions or send it via Matt, but I'm always a resource to be able to get answers and direct answers and feedback, so.
So you do take milk cart- I do rinse out my milk cartons before I put them in, but, but people probably just put them in there, but don't rinse them out, and they still are okay, right?
They are, and I, you know, I'll leave you with this, because we can talk recycling, and I know you got a long night.
I know, I'm sure we gotta get out of here.
I'll leave you with this, um, don't make one problem with another problem. I hear this all the time when people come through, and I do a MRF tour, and they're like, I spend hours rinsing out my milk container, my tomato sauce, the whole bit, and we go, you can, I mean, do your best effort, but we don't want to create a drought over trying to save the world through recycling. So we always say, do your best effort, but it all gets cleaned in the end by us anyway. It's kind of like the caps, people go, well, should I put the cap on when I, you know, put my plastic? Well, what happens when it comes to us? It all gets squished, and the cap comes off anyway, so, we're like, leave it on, take it off, do whatever, it's, so. Just don't create one problem for another problem, do the best job you can, but, you know, milk, it all gets rinsed out anyway.
Okay, and then a little bit of pizza stuck on the pizza box, my daughter won't let me put it in the recycle.
If it's, doesn't change the structure of the pizza box, so I always tell people, yes, pizza boxes are recyclable. If it's got a bunch of cheese in it, and the grease has dripped through, and it's on your counter, yeah, that's probably not recyclable, but if it's a nice clean pizza, and it's sitting there, and it's got maybe a little bit of grease, yeah, that's recyclable, if it's got a bunch of cheese and meat stuff, no, it's not. So, I mean, you know, it's, I always tell everybody, don't wish cycle, you know, it, when in doubt, throw it out, so.
Okay.
All right?
Well, Blakely, thank you.
Thank you.
Great discussion.
Yep, great evening, and I'll make sure to get all that material over to you, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
To answer Diane's question, it's 764, and then you get a dollar 48 discount if you recycle.
Okay, and the Smart Truck idea, I'm intrigued by that, but just to the point end, and I, and I think it's an interesting one, the enforcement of compliance then rests with the city, and uh, we certainly want to flush that whole idea out. I like the technology, I like the idea, question would be, is, is that the enforcement may be a challenge, something we need to work towards, so, again, thank you.
And let me, maybe next quarter, I give you a full rundown of it, you can see it.
See your look back, yeah.
Yeah, I can come back next quarter, and you can really look, not talking about anything, maybe we'll do a high level talk of where you're at first quarter, but I can do a Smart Truck, takes about 30 minutes, and can probably even have one out here so you can see it, but that'd be great.
I like. We actually do a Smart Truck run with no penalties, just to see what our residents are already doing? So just to do it, in, in, in my world, we call that just, let's monitor, let's not take action.
We already have it on the trucks.
Do you? Okay, so we're already doing it, so it's there, we're just not utilizing it.
It just hasn't been turned on, it's already there, we do that all the time for other cities, so yes, that is a capability we can do.
And how do you notify them of their thing, is it something you leave at the house, or you mail it to them, or?
Say we're watching you, you know?
It's whatever the city wants, we, if we have emails, great, we do phone calls, great, we can do text messages, we can do it through the city, I mean, the sky's the limit, you know, when you really think about notification. Every city does it differently, it depends on what uh, communication we have. But let's do a full, I'll give you a full presentation, and you guys can, you know, look at it, and tell me what you think.
Let's plan for it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, council, we have some action items, uh, first one up will be Consideration Resolution 24-13, a resolution of the Roy City Council establishing the 2025 City Council meeting dates, and I think, Matt, you're gonna talk to this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, as you see in your packet, Resolution 24-13 just has the established dates for next year. Sometimes we have conflicts with the first and uh, third Tuesday this year, we do not. The only one that was questionable is the possibility of having the election on November 4th. Um, we decided to put the November 4th date in there, and we can always cancel it if we choose to later, so. Um, just the first and third at 5:30, just like we've normally been doing it.
Okay, perfect, okay, any comments, questions, council, about the meeting dates for next year? Okay, then with that then, do I have a motion then to approve, approve Resolution 24-13?
So moved.
Thank you, Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian, this is a roll call vote, Brittany?
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxon?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Scadden?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Resolution 24-13 is approved, thank you. We got Consideration Resolution 24-14 amending fees for Roy City Parks and Recreation Department in adopting a Roy Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule. Michelle, you're gonna lead us in the conversation on this one, thank you.
Just stand on my tippy toes. Mayor and council, thank you for letting me be here today, I'm presenting Resolution 24-14. This resolution is amending the Roy City Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule, specifically the fees that we were focused on for this change were fees, user fees for recreation services or recreation programs. Over the last year and a half, Recreation Department has been meticulously tracking the in-season program costs, program by program. After review, we found that most of the registration fees that we were collecting were not sufficiently covering the direct costs of a program. So after review of all of that, we decided that it was in the best interest of the city to go back and look at our fees and amend them so that they were more, getting, so that we were getting better cost recovery for our in-season costs. So on average, we saw a 19% increase across everything, some a little bit more, some a little bit less. One thing that we did was we changed some of the user fees within the program based on the age and the level of service that they were receiving. For example, it cost me a lot less to run a T-ball league because the coaches are out there doing everything versus a junior high basketball league or baseball league where I have umpires, officials, staff, and that kind of thing. So we tried to divvy out some of the age groups within each program so that they were paying more closely to the services that they were receiving. And then we're also proposing the implementation of a $10 non-resident fee, that's gonna be a flat fee across all of our recreation programs. And the idea behind that is simple, non-residents are not paying any taxes into the city, yet tax dollars are helping to support some of these programs, so we're implementing that $10 flat fee. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have, but that kind of is a summary in a nutshell.
Okay, thanks, Michelle, council, any comments, questions relative to the changes in the fee schedule? Please, go ahead, Brian?
When, when was the last time we amended fees?
The last time the recreation fees, they raised in 2020 by about $5.
Okay.
And as you know, since 2020 to now.
No, that's, okay.
So does the fee when they play ba- baseball and basketball, now that includes like, baseball, that includes a jersey and hat, that fee too?
So this is the direct cost, it includes their jersey or uniform, it includes any of the direct costs, so the staffing that's out there, the equipment that we're putting out there, all of that kind of stuff.
And then if any of these kids that want to sign up but don't have that money, there's a help, you can give them help.
We do have a fee waiver program, it's an application, very simple application process in office that they fill out, providing they provide us with their proof of residency and proof of need, and it grants them up to 50% off any registration fee.
That's, that's really good, so.
Do we have line aside in terms of like, how many non-residents are currently participating, and what the impact would be for that $10 fee?
So Lizzie pulled the numbers just from last year's registrations, it was about 20% of all of our programs. We didn't put a dollar amount to it, I should have thought of that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It's about 20% of our participants are non-residents.
Right, so I guess from a participation perspective, how many participated, and that's the easy 20% calculation. So just curious, because that's actually impactful, so, okay, thank you.
So on your soc- like on your field rentals, so like when a soccer league, you know, practices and plays there every week, they pay basically $10 an hour?
Yep, yeah, and like I said, today we were just focusing, or this time we were just focusing on the recreation programs, we didn't go into quite analyzing the parks fees, so the field rental fees, the special event fees, um, your Bowery rentals and things like that.
So obviously, this would take an effect, like, because basketball's right now, isn't it?
Yeah, so um, it would take effect for our baseball and softball season, so any of the spring programs that would be coming up.
And so you're not um, talking about covering staff generally, like um, the staff that takes the applications and the staff that does the administrative work, that's not being covered, just the?
Yep, it's just the, the youth staff that is out there on site, the supervisors that are out there working the programs in the evening, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any other questions, comments?
Nope, I think it's a great idea.
Have you taken a look at these compared to other cities?
Yeah, so it's within about $5 to $15 to, compared to our surrounding cities on the plus or minus side. Everybody says there's just a little bit different. You know, we really tried to focus on, instead of comparing us to what others are doing, really focus on how much it costs to run a program. Doing some things on our end to reduce some of our costs, and then also looking at this.
Yeah, sounds like it should be that way, thank you.
Okay, with that then, uh, thank you for the comments, council, uh, with that then, do I have a motion then to approve Resolution 24-14?
So moved.
Sophie, okay, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Diane, okay, this is a roll call vote, Brittany?
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Scadden?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxon?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council, uh, Resolution 24-14 is in fact approved, thanks, Michelle. Okay, council, we have one more, Resolution 24-15, Amber, you're gonna lead us in the conversation dealing with the budget.
Thank you, mayor and council, tonight's budget opening is for a few items that were included in last year's budget, but were not completed by June 30th, and therefore need to be rebudgeted in this year's budget. The first item is in the general fund and is for the complex. Uh, with the grand opening date of August 1st, we were not able to finalize all of the remodel expenses in last fiscal year. The complex had $85,000 remaining in their budget at the end of the year, and we propose that this amount be rebudgeted in this year to close out the remodel project. The next item in the capital, is in the Capital Projects Fund, and is for $127,000 for two police vehicles that were budgeted last fiscal year but were not received by June 30th. This includes a canine vehicle and a detective vehicle. The last item is also in the Capital Projects Fund, and is for a new leisure pool liner and play structure at the Aquatic Center. The liner was budgeted in last year, but staff determined it would be better to replace the play structure and the liner at the same time, and then we also applied for a ramp grant for this project, and we were awarded $222,000 for this project. And for these reasons, we decided to wait until after the season ended to start the entire project. So the budget adjustment includes adding $934,000 for the project, and then adding $222,000 in revenue for the ramp grant. So I present to you Resolution 24-14 for your consideration to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget. The proposed resolution will increase the previously, previously approved general fund budget by $85,000 and the Capital Projects Fund budget by $1,061,000. We recommend that you receive public input and then consider approval of Revolution 24-15.
Okay, thank you, Amber, okay, with that introduction then, council, I need a motion to go into a public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Diane, okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sophie, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, we are now in a public hearing. If you'd like to share your thoughts relative to this budget, uh, please step up to mic, give us your name and address, and we'll uh, we'll go ahead and uh, take your considerations, thanks, Kevin?
I'm Kevin Homer, I live at 5398 South.
I live at 5398 South 4000 West here in Roy. I appreciate the efforts of Amber and her staff to do these reviews and adjustments to the budget. It looks to me like they're appropriate and I would suggest that you pass those.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else like to share a thought? Okay. Seeing none, then we will go ahead, I'll go for a motion then to go out of a public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Thank you, Brian. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Hearing none, we are now out of a public hearing. Any comments or questions to Amber relative to changing the budget? Okay, okay. With that then, I need a motion to approve Resolution 24-15, a resolution of the Roy City Council approving adjustments to the fiscal year 2025 budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Randy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. This is a roll call vote. Brittany?
Councilmember Scadon?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jackson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Yep, approval of Resolution 24-15. Thank you, Amber, for the information on that. Okay, we have some, a couple of discussion items we'd like to go with you and talk about, which is Roy Day's Super Saturday Event Timeline. I think this, Michelle, you and Chief Gwender may be able to kind of talk this through, so we'll lead off with Michelle.
Mayor and council, hello again. Thank you for letting me sit before you. I am here with a discussion item for Roy Day's Super Saturday. We are recommending the council consider a time change to the Super Saturday event as well as approval to move forward with a safe zone declaration for the Roy Day's Super Saturday. Currently, Super Saturday runs post parade from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Proposed time change would bring it from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. This decision comes in response, as you are aware, to the multiple juvenile-related issues that Roy Day's Super Saturday has been seeing over the past several years. In recent years, there have been different steps taken to help alleviate the continued juvenile problem at Roy Days. I understand that we've tried fencing the area, controlled entry and exit, adding bag searches, we've moved the location, we've separated the Saturday events from the Saturday evening fireworks. After post-event debriefings, vendor surveys, the executive staff got together and we recommend that a time change in the safe zone declaration is our next step to help improve the overall Roy Day's event and make Super Saturday safer and more enjoyable for the families that we want to be attending. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and maybe Chief Gwin has some things to say.
So really the biggest issue we've been combating is, and I don't know why we were selected by this particular group of juveniles and how it continues to evolve from one generation of kids to another, but unfortunately, that's the reality we live in. They show up every year, they're very tactical, they, with cell phones, they can communicate with one another and they, we watch them communicate when we're following them, they will set up distractions. And anything that we've been able to do disrupt them one year, we're successful, but they make up for it the following year. And so really what we're trying to do is, we, we know that they don't start showing up until around 5, 6 o'clock or so. And so if we can maybe potentially get things shut down a little bit sooner, the word gets out that what they're showing up for doesn't exist anymore. The other thing is too, as far as the safe zone declaration, if they're in a public place and they're not doing anything illegal, we're really at a loss as to what we can do, but this kind of gives us more, a greater ability to intervene with a quasi-zero tolerance policy and, and removing these folks from our parks when, when they shouldn't be there without actually having to wait for some kind of criminal act or infraction to occur.
Okay.
Can you explain what that difference is a little bit better for the safe zone? I mean, like what the pros and the cons to a safe zone would be?
Yeah, so they're, if they're being disruptive, it would allow us to take action. The biggest thing is the deterrent effect, right? We're looking to be a deterrent before we take action. And so that's really what we're looking for is deterrent effect, but again, being in a public place, there's certain things that they have to do before we take action. Under this declaration, it gives a little bit more leeway for us to take action and remove a problem.
So I think echoing to Councilman Wilson's point, this idea about a safe zone, it's a declaration, is it signed, is it notification that we've now created a safe zone and therefore we're letting everybody, or those who want to know that in fact we've created that safe zone at that location?
I'm going to defer to Matt on this one.
Yeah, so it would be adopted in a public meeting, and so that would be one way of notification. It would also require us to put up signs during the events, just notifying that it has been designated as a safe zone and then also certain restrictions. So there, there's a very, various number of restrictions that we can put on, which include, you could do the bag search, we can implement it so that certain activities aren't allowed in this area, we would, and then also certain items that we could restrict from coming into the area as well.
Okay. And that's important to understand that. Do you have questions, counsel, about that as we try to move forward based on your recommendation? Sophie?
I have a, I'm more of a, I just, I love the idea. After being on the committee and watching my clock over the last, the last three hours of the whole night and watching it totally like switch, I, I total, I love the idea. And I hate to see our great event in a couple of hours end in, I won't say, it's just not a good, it doesn't end well. And so if you can have that ending end well, I think it's a, you're on a win. I love the idea, I love the idea. Because I looked around at 5, 6, 7, 8 and 9, and you see the families leave, you see the kids come, and you see the vendors want to get out of there as well. And so I think you're just making that, yeah, you're making it, you're making a good transition. So I love the idea.
The other thing we would do too is, one, we would need to, because not all vendors want to leave, right? If there's kids, they're spending their parents' money, they absolutely want, are willing to take that money, right? And so the other thing we would do is we would try and encourage vendors to leave as soon as possible, and we would actually have staff there hopefully to kind of create some kind of coordination so they're not having to drive through people and whatnot.
Yeah, and it's late, it's dark, so they can't see as well, yeah.
Well, I think it's great that you're going to end it at 7:00. The main reason is because the fireworks aren't there anymore. And so that's what people used to sit around and go buy food and sit and watch the fireworks, but there's no reason to be open past 7:00. What I think needs to be done is like, I can't believe how many people last year were starting to set up blankets at the church and everything, and I'm going around, I just want you to know the fireworks aren't here. And so I think we need to, you know, let more people know or have a sign or something to say fireworks, you know, it's not here or at the golf course or where we're going to still keep doing it there. Because literally people thought, and I'm like, no, I don't think you can see the fireworks from North Park. So I had to go around and tell people, just so you know, there's no fireworks there. And so to where there's no fireworks there, I think it's just easier if you close it at 7:00 and then people don't have a reason to sit around.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
There was a lot of signs, I will give, there was a lot of signs that were posted that said, no firework viewing here at this park. It said that all over, but I think the kids were there and they're still going to come. The kids aren't there to watch the fireworks, they're there to cause a little bit of havoc.
This group that's showing up, that is their intent.
Yeah, so.
And most of them aren't even from Roy. Let me be very clear when I say that. They are coming from other cities, they plan for this every year, they show up, they wear their colors, they're on their phones. It's very tactical, it's very calculated. Sometimes there are adults that are involved encouraging the behavior and we have to deal with them as well. Like that, this is what they do every year. And when they're intent on doing that, it's actually very hard to combat that. We've tried to prevent the, you know, from having to narrow it down to one day and changing locations and separating from fireworks and putting, we didn't want to do any of those things. And so this is another thing we're going to try.
And I was, I had the conversation with Michelle. I went to several parks in the area and those big groups were not there. There was 5, 6 here, 10, 12 here, but you didn't get the big congregations at Roy West. There was nothing farther down, there wasn't, you know how there's different churches and locations, parks, schools? I, we went to several and they were not, there wasn't the big congregation. So I think if you break it up a little bit, they'll just go, go home, go back to wherever, I don't know. And they're not going to go to another park, they're going to leave there and be like, okay.
Yeah, because probably they don't know where all the parks are, so.
Yeah, but there wasn't that, there wasn't that congregation, so.
I think it's sound, I think it's wise, I think we should push forward with it, it makes sense.
Well, and that's the, that's the comment, counsel. Are we okay now to move forward with this approach? Or you feel comfortable?
Yep.
Okay. Matt, I think we got a concurrence from the entire council. Let's go ahead and let's make, make this happen.
I mean, obviously you'll get a hold of the vendors and.
Yeah, they'll know.
Yeah, and hopefully they'll be okay with it, yeah.
Okay, Michelle, chief, thank you so much. Okay, well done. Okay, counsel, the last one on this discussion item was a discussion about Weber Human Services Senior Center. I'm going to go ahead and talk a little about this. I think I've given you a little background information. I provided you some of the discussions that have taken place. I'd like to tell you I know exactly how this thing's going to flush out, but we don't. The decision about whether or not the Weber Human Services operation in our Hope Center will continue will be base, literally be based on what Weber Human Services decides. We're certainly providing input, we're sharing information, but one of the things that right now seems to be a concern in terms of our ability to continue is they need to have some subsidy of pay for them to afford to pay their, their, their staff. I will tell you from a conversation, and Matt, I've been very pointed on this, we are telling Weber Human Services, Roy City does not want to take over the hiring and management of the team in there. We think Weber Human Services is best suited for that, that's what they do in terms of dealing with aging people, aging services. And to be very honest with you, and Michelle, I'm going to put you on the spot, but the conversation, if it's forced to come into Roy City, it's going to go under you. And, and not to take away what you do, because you do great things, Weber Human Services in taking care of those elements are not a Parks and Recreation function. Not that you couldn't learn it over a few years, maybe do get it down, but my heavens, that would be, we just think that they're the experts. I know, by the way, they're the only ones authorized to get the funding from both the state and federal sources to be able to pay for it. And so right now, they're struggling. Roy City, in essence, our particular senior center is, I think it's come down to one decision, and that is can we come up with $12,000 to help subsidize the staffing need to manage it? And, and the thing is, is that we're not the only one there. If you look at the numbers, and I shared you in terms of what the registered patrons are, you'll see that Roy City's Hillside Senior Center has a number of people that join us from other cities, and particularly Hooper and West Haven. Now, South Ogden and, and the Senior Center in West Washington Terrace have agreed that they're going to subsidize at $12,000. North Ogden and Harrisville have basically agreed they're going to subsidize that center up there of $12,000. What we have done in our conversation is says, then, then what we think could be the appropriate thing would be is for us to basically ask Hooper and West Haven and ask their mayors to take it to city council and ask them to split the, the $12,000 between the three cities. And, and that has done, that has been done. We're just waiting for them, city councils, to approve that. But, but I'm going to be blunt, and I think we tried to provide the details, we believe we're contributing about $80,000 a year already. And now recognizing that this facility holds both, both the Senior Center as well as the Boys and Girls Club, and so we're investing in that, we maintain that. Brandon, your team does a great job, okay? And you do everything they ask them to do, but then they'll do a bit more. And so what we're asking in the part of this conversation is, would the Roy City Council be willing to basically come up with an equal number, a $4,000 addition to help us help, in this case Weber Human Services, come up and have this num, money they need to be able to accommodate the staffing? Other cities have considered taking on and hiring and taking over responsibility for the personnel. Matt, you and I have talked about this, we've told you before, counsel, we don't want to do that. That's not what we do. And we certainly, it appears at this moment, Weber Human Services is accepting Roy City's position and saying is, you guys do what you do best. We'll see what we can do to help. So the, so the conversation tonight would be is, what do you think is Roy City and where you consider, would you consider adding out of the legislative, I guess a legislative discretionary fund, $4,000 to help offset this, this staffing issue that Weber Human Services right now is indicating they have? That's the conversation. What's your thoughts?
I have a couple of questions in regards to the numbers we're seeing. Are these actual individual people or are these visits? Do you know?
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't get the report that Naboo basically sent us. Do you, do you have that information?
I've always thought it was people.
Yeah, the best I got from that was, these are actually people who registered at each of the facilities. And, and counsel, you know, we're not, we're not providing, I asked for this information very clearly. I want you to notice, okay, out of county, how many people out of county are registered at the Roy Hillside Senior Center? One from Morgan, and you can certainly see the rest of them as, to your question, Diane, best we can tell, these are people, individuals who have registered with this, with this facility.
And is there any fee that the out of county people or out of country people, but, I mean, never mind, but.
According to their grants, they cannot charge fees. They can ask for donations, but they cannot charge a fee.
Okay.
And there's a, if you go in there, they have, Diane, they have a little box right there and it basically says donations. And I've seen people throw $6, $7 for the meals and stuff, and, and there is a little financing when they do the, the other programs they do over there, but for the most part, for the meals, our seniors are not charged anything, okay, to go in there. If they, if they can't afford it, and many don't and can't, then that meal is, in my opinion, probably the best meal they get a day. So. What's your thoughts? I, I, I'll tell you, I, Matt and I have talked this over, I am so reluctant to take this to you. I have pushed back so hard, saying is, is that there needs to be some element of fairness. But, but if, in my opinion, if you will consider the $4,000 contribution and we can secure the $4,000 from Hooper and the $4,000 from West Haven, we can be, we think we are exactly where the other centers are in terms of getting through this decision process.
Do you know when?
And that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to protect, in my opinion, the best, Kathy could probably talk about this better than I do, she was here, but the best senior center in Weber County and certainly the only senior center on the west side of I-15, in which case where all the growth is happening. I mean, it's, you want to talk about what's going to happen in Weber County, look to Hooper, look to West Haven, look to Plain City, that's where it's happening, and we're the only one on that side of it. So comment, sorry, Sophie.
Yeah, do you, no, do you know when it's going to be brought to those, those councils? Or?
The mayor's basically indicating to me they were taking the action to take it to their councils for consideration.
Okay, so in the next month or so.
I'm hoping December is the, is the day I'll get feedback.
Well, I think it's a no-brainer, in my opinion. I've been over to that senior center many a times and, like you said, it's the only meal a lot of those people get every day. Plus, it's not even the meal, it's the getting out and having friends and mingling, and they get it in the morning and have coffee and donuts and it's their whole life. And I've known people that, I mean Kathy's like their mother, and she's involved in their families and, and it just frustrates me that all these people at the county level that are making all these decisions, not one of them ever been out to look at our senior center and see what it does. And they're making decisions for all these seniors and they've never even been. And they're making decisions for all these seniors, and they've never even been out and seen how important it is for their li, in their lives to get this meal and to just get out of the house and have something to look forward to. And I think we have to do whatever we have to do to keep this senior center going. Because, like, it's the best one in the county, and I hear nothing but positive remarks from all the seniors that go to it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Diane. Thank you.
I wonder if we can get with our seniors, and I don't know if this is even something Kathy could do, and have them write up a letter that just, and give it to their council.
That's a good idea. I certainly would not hesitate to, uh, to help facilitate that. Because, uh, we certainly want to get Hooper and West Haven. And, and I'm gonna take it depending on what happens with Riverdale. I, I think they need to help us, because look at the numbers.
Yeah.
These are their people, and I shared this information with those mayors to take to their city councils. So it isn't about just saying is, well, Bob wants another $4,000, why don't we give it to him? I'm telling you, you've got 45 people who are registered here. And, and if you look at West Haven, they're registered here than they are in some of the other, uh, senior centers in the county, so.
And didn't you say, Matt, that once this new program takes effect, that those people that are getting meals delivered to their homes, that will go away?
No, they're, they're still planning on doing Meals on Wheels.
Oh, they are, okay.
But, but the part that's going to change is that some of the cities have weekly, uh, meal programs, and they go away. So the only ones that are going to be, unless, it's like Riverdale that does, they have their own chef and they basically make their own foods. It's an interesting, it's, it's not in the program, they're just doing their own thing. There are a number of cities that actually have the county deliver meals once a month, once a week. And those will stop under this plan. And so, yeah, it, uh, changes are coming, and we're trying to educate as best we can of the changes that they have to make, so. Other thoughts, comments? Do we move forward? You okay with this?
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just, I, I can't see where, I can't see where we not move forward. I mean, these are our people again, and that's a lot of people. 788 total? Yeah. I mean, I, I would hate to, I would hate to speak before a group of seniors, especially that many, and tell them, oh, you're not welcome here because the county said so.
Diane, great point, Diane. Uh, Brian, Diane, do you have a comment?
As I look at the number distribution, Ogden overall, you know, definitely has a very large amount at the Golden Hours Center, but compared to the other cities we're asking to contribute, they, they actually have a higher number. And then Riverdale actually has a pretty good-sized number, pretty equal to Hooper. I mean, I guess if it gets down tight, is there a possibility that they could even, uh, we could ask some of those other cities to help contribute to that? Or, um, I mean, and then the other thing is, like, for example, Ogden, who pays all of the money at the Golden Hours Senior Center for them? Is that, um, like, we pay the $80,000 for Roy? Are they paying something like that, or is that funded a different way? And so is, is there a way to, you know, maybe to balance out, you know, every year, they could give a certain percentage to different centers?
Yeah, my understanding is that Ogden picks up the rest of the pace, um, for what the Golden Hours is doing. So they have full-time staff there that they're paying above and beyond what that grant money they're receiving. To my knowledge, they're not asking neighboring cities to participate in that. That was more initiated by, it's, it's always traditionally been done through Pleasant View and North Ogden. As of late, it was South Ogden donating to, uh, Washington Terrace. And that, this idea came to us from Weber Human Services to ask our neighboring cities. Now, something to be a little cautious of, now that, uh, you know, they haven't made their decision, obviously. But Riverdale has a senior center as well, as we kinda talked about today. We do have Roy residents going there as well. And so if we start hitting up Riverdale, depending on what happens to their program, maybe if they close it down, or maybe if they don't, we do have Roy residents going down there as well. And they're not getting any money currently from Weber Human Services.
And that's correct. Weber Human Services does not support the, uh, the program of Riverdale in large part because Riverdale is not compliant into the state and federal standards required in terms of how they do that. And nutritional requirements for the food, there's a variety of things they do. But there's also subsidizing it. So what happens there is, Riverdale's picking that cost up, including the chef they hired to cook the food. Whether that continues or doesn't continue going forward, we're not sure. But it's clear Weber Human Services wants to consolidate. And, and we think Roy has an excellent shot of being one of the remaining, uh, uh, facilities, if we can get this thing, this last piece all finished out. And so that's kind of our direction. But, but so there's no confusion, and I wanna make, it's, it's clear on the record. We're doing everything that Weber Human Services asks of us, but we're not willing to deviate from our principles. And, and by the same token is, if they shut the, if they shut the senior center down in the Hope Center, then, then, I've already talked to Matt, uh, then we're gonna come to the city council and we're gonna repurpose that building. Certainly, the Boys and Girls Club will be downstairs, that won't change, but what happens upstairs will have to be repurposed. And, and we have no choice. And you, as the city council, will have to help make that decision. But, but I don't know what we do with all the seniors. Because they will now have to either go to Riverdale, or they will have to go to Ogden, or they will have to go to the Pleasant View, North Ogden facility. And, and some of them, I, I don't know if they have the means to get there. And so I think we'll basically, uh, my biggest fear, to be honest with you, is that if they don't have this type of facility, then the only place they can go is stay home. And these people really need the social and, and nutritional benefits that I think this senior center brings to the table.
When does this decision have to be made by?
This decision, all indications we've got would be it's gonna be made in December or January. That's how soon, because they have to make a decision. We're gonna start, as you well know, in May, we're gonna be starting setting our budget in motion. And, and you need to know exactly what we're gonna continue doing, or if the decision is to close the center, you need to know what you wanna do with that building.
Well, I suppose we could have a public meeting, invite some of these people from Weber Human Services to come and answer some of these questions to these seniors. You know, let them face the music and, and tell us why they're doing it. I mean, they're, they don't ever come around, so. It's just, you know, I don't know.
I will tell you, Anne, Matt and I have been attending meeting after meeting after meeting, trying to educate, trying to do that. And I was somewhat shocked, to your point, that the comment was made that some of the leadership, uh, down there have not been to the Roy Hillside Center. And that shocks me, because this is what they do at the leadership. Luckily, their employees who manage and run that, uh, are always there, always engaged. But certainly, uh, there's some concerns on my part of why some of the senior leadership haven't done that. But I, I can't speak for them. I can only suggest is, is that they do, um, they kinda manage their own way, I guess.
Do we anticipate this, uh, this amount of money will be pretty consistent for a period of time? Is this related specifically to staffing, and we can see that it's going to be going up every year, or, I mean, what?
At this moment, it's just, it's just going, we don't even know if it's gonna be $12,000. What we're doing is, we're saying is, is that from a council, uh, we're doing that. I will tell you personally, uh, Matt, and certainly please, uh, offer your comments. I don't, I don't like coming into a city council meeting and asking you, as a city council, to make a financial decision for the next four years, when there could very well be a whole different council sitting at this table. I think this decision, in my opinion, needs to be from this period. And if we have to come back to the well with more information, so that the next council has to make a decision, we'll bring that. But, but I cannot, in all fairness, ask you that you need to commit this money, okay, for the next 10 years, knowing perfectly well, the city, sitting city council has that right and has a, a right to make a decision on it. That may seem a little crazy, and it certainly will not go well with Weber Human Services looking for some consistency. But if, but if the argument of why it's necessary is good today, and the argument of why it's necessary is good for four years, any city council here should have a right to make that decision. And if they don't, based on the information, don't believe it's in the best interest, then they have a right to simply say no. And I think we have an obligation to simply says, if you're gonna ask this, then let's ask it in the terms that says, we will, we'll base on the decision of the city council who's sitting, they will decide whether or not we continue supporting or don't. Matt, you certainly have a right to make comments on that.
I think, um, I think a lot of those questions can be answered in an interlocal agreement. Right now, we're currently having it, we do have an interlocal agreement. I think it sunsetted in like, 10 or so years, quite a while, like, yeah. Obviously, if we're making a long-term commitment, we're going to have to re-enter that interlocal agreement. The current one, there was an opt-out period that kinda cushions future city councils if they wanna change their mind. But all that can be negotiated later. I think in, you know, from what I see from Weber Human Services is, they just wanna know, you know, where we, what we feel. We're not, we're definitely not agreeing to anything tonight with an interlocal agreement that will have to be adopted later. But they just wanna get our general feeling of what the council sees right now.
I mean, I would say path forward is, it's all contingent upon what our, our cousin cities, sister cities, brother cities, whatever they take and are willing to pony up.
Exactly.
Would be what I would put, what I would feel comfortable saying from a contingent perspective, I would move forward if they were to take and pony up.
And really, to that point, our position would be is, Roy City says we're willing to step up if you agree. I cannot speak for the city councils of Hooper and the city councils of West Haven, they have to make that decision. But in order for this to work, they have to, they have to step up. If they all step up, to your point, and you're okay with that, we'll move forward. If they choose not to, and certainly they have a right to choose, then I will indicate to you is, is that it could be the game changer. So, uh, all we can ask would be is what we can control, and what we control is what you're willing to offer to help support this.
At this point in time, the other cities are not contributing like we are, right? This would be like their total contribution specifically from them, that $4,000, where ours is $84.
Yeah, and just to make up the deficiency of what Weber Human Services is putting now on our backs. We're saying, hey, look, uh, Hooper and West Haven, we're already burying an $80,000 a year on paper that we can go back and point at to serve your citizens. Please just pony up $4,000 out of your coffers to help us. Just that little incremental amount. I can't see why they would not.
And we have shared that, Randy, we have shared that specific information in terms of what Roy City has currently been providing and have for years to ensure that the senior center functions and that Boys and Girls Club over there operates. And we've been doing that for a long time. Comments? Are we okay with, go ahead, move forward as best we can with what we know? You okay with that? Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward. Anything official, as Matt indicated, has to be done through an interlocal agreement if it needs to do that. And that will require you then to assess it, ask the detailed questions, and make a final decision. Okay, Council, uh, we got city managers and council report. Matt?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. Remember the holiday lighting contest? Entries must be turned into the city by December 11th at 5:00 PM. Judging will take place December 12th through the 15th, and the top three winners in the people's choice on December 23rd. Also remember, bar D is at Roy High School on Thursday at 7:00 PM. On December 12th, this is just another reminder, at 2:00 PM, um, to feed the seniors. And again, thank you for those that came out and fed last Wednesday. There was a lot of people there, it was a great event.
So when is that again?
That is on December 12th at 2:00 PM.
Okay.
And then also, we did cover a lot of the information that we needed for the remaining of the year in the city council meeting. Not saying that we're canceling the next one, but tentatively, um, we're, we're planning on holding it. But, you know, we got the schedules out, we got the, the audit report. But if anything comes up, we can surely hold a council meeting. But, um, I just wanted to let you know that there's a possibility of canceling that meeting. That was a long way of saying it.
Seventeenth.
I won't be here that night.
Anything else, Matt?
That's it.
Okay, Council, do you have any comments, questions?
I just had a couple of things from our, our student who couldn't make it tonight. She just wanted me to tell you that this, on December 14th, they've been going around, we're trying to get money for our Supper Santa. And that's what the concert money goes towards also. And so on December 14th, they'll be at Harmon's. They were at Weineger's last, last Saturday, from 10 to 2. And they're gonna ask donations from people going in and out of the grocery store. I think last Saturday, they got almost $400 raised. We have so many, I get daily phone calls of people wanting to talk to principal that need help with Christmas. And so we just are trying to raise as much money as we can. And then they just wanted to say, thank you so much for the money that, uh, you supported to get, we had seven Spirit buses, um, full of kids, went to the football game. It was a really tough one to lose, but we had so many kids there and so many citizens of Roy. I mean, it was a huge turnout. And, um, we're just really proud of our, our team. And, and, um, it was just, it's just, it was really a tough loss. It's still eating at me and all the coaches. It's just, but, um, they just wanted to say thank you for the support that you gave us, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, hearing none then. Uh, Council, we have one more piece we need to do. That is, uh, we need to have a motion tenor, a closed-door meeting, okay? To discuss the potential sale of real property. Did I say that right, Matt? Sometimes I don't say that, and I have to make that clear. And that meeting will be held here. Okay, so with that then, uh, do I have a motion then to enter in a closed-door meeting?
So moved.
Okay, Sophie? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I was. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let me just make one comment before we take a little break. When I was a city council member, sitting right where you were at, Brian, we had that decision. And I won't give you the details, 'cause it's an interesting one. But I will tell you, we went, asked the question, or the mayor did, I wasn't the mayor at the time, asked the question is, do I have a motion to go into a, uh, closed-door meeting? I, I added the motion, the city council member next to me said, yes, he seconded it. And then we went to the, to a vote, and, and the mayor called for a roll call vote. Three of the city council members said no. No. And we didn't go into a closed-door meeting. I still remember that as if it was yesterday, okay? I won't get you the details, so, uh, if you have an interest, know the details, I'll share with you. But, because it's part of the public record, but I'm telling you, it was a shocker to me. So anyway, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and take, take five minutes if you don't mind. Come back here right around 7:30, and we'll go ahead and, uh, and have Brody go ahead and lead the conversation. Thank you.